Everybody in?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna start with going over the procedures for the meeting tonight. Ms. Janice will go through the agenda. Once she's through the agenda and gets to the cases, I'm gonna read all four cases in at one time since it pertains to basically one piece of property. Once I've read all the cases in, we'll have the applicant do his presentation. And he'll receive comments from the planning commission. Once that is done, the floor will be open for public comment. You'll need to hit the raise hand button or type your comment in the comments section so your mic can be turned on. Once we've been through all the comments, floor will be closed for comments. And then the planning commission will vote on each case independently. And with that being said, Ms. Janice, you got the floor.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight on January the 28th. I'm really sorry we can't be there and everybody see each other. But we all know that we're praying for each other and thinking about everybody. So as we call this meeting together, we're going to do it first with an invocation. So if you'll bow your heads, please. Dear Father, we come to you tonight just giving you praise for the very many blessings you've given us. And Lord, most of all, we pray tonight as we pray every day. For a cure. And Lord, we just want you to send us a cure for this COVID so that all of our friends and neighbors can be well. And as we pray to you tonight, Lord, we pray that you will bless this little town that we live in. Help us to make the right decisions for it. And Lord, just be with us in everything we do. These things we ask in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, now if you'll stand, we'll have a pledge to the flag. You know, you don't, you don't bow down for this, you stand up and stand tall. Our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. The state of the United States of America.
And to the republic of which it stands.
One nation, under God. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now, I hope you've all had time to read the minutes of the last meeting. The meeting was October the 29th, 2020. And if you have, is there anybody that has not had time to read the minutes? Then could I have a motion that we accept them as read?
I'll make a motion that we accept them as read.
That was Barbara. Okay, or second?
My second.
And who, who might that be? Was that?
This is Alma.
Okay.
Please state your name when you're making a motion.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And all in favor? Let's go, let's, let's have names, okay? And I'm gonna start, and if you'll just say yay or nay. Richard Homick. Amanda Sosby.
Yay.
Barbara Forrester.
Yay.
Alma Thomas.
Yay.
Catherine Self.
Yay.
Brian Lenkus. Okay. Then the minutes have been approved. Okay. We, Tim is going to read the four cases that we have on the agenda tonight. And he's gonna read, my understanding is Tim, you're gonna read them all at one time, right?
Correct.
And then when Tim finishes, we'll have a roll call to see how you want to vote. Yay.
Once, once I read the minutes in, then we're gonna give the applicant.
I forgot about the question.
Yeah, we're gonna let, we're gonna let the applicant speak. And take questions from the planning commission. And then we'll open up the floor for public comment.
Okay, hon.
Well, the first case we have on the agenda is R20-014. The applicant is Stanton Porter. The property owner is Ann Jones. Parcel number is LG110-008. Zoning is R44. The requested zoning is R22CSO. The property is located on Hodges Street, and it's 3.02 acres. The applicant is asking for a rezone to do a small 10-lot subdivision. Next case we have is for the same piece of property. It's variance 20-015. The applicant is Stanton Porter. Property owner is Ann Jones. Mountain parcel number is 110-008. Present zoning is R44. The acreage is 3.02. And they're asking for a variance of Section 119-2492 to reduce the lot width from 100 feet to 75 feet. This case is R20-016. The applicant is Stanton Porter. The property owner is Ann Jones. Mountain parcel is LG110-008A-0. The present zoning is R44. The requested zoning is R22CSO. Property is located on Covington Street. It's 3.84 acres. And they're asking for a rezone to do a small subdivision. The next case is variance 20-017. The applicant is Stanton Porter. The property owner is Ann Jones. Mountain parcel number is LG110-008A-0. The present zoning is R44. The acreage is 3.84 acres. Property is located on Covington Street. And they're asking for a variance to Section 119-2492 to reduce the lot width from 100 feet to 75 feet. That is all four cases. And if we could let the applicant speak. Present his cases. Kyle, if you could turn on Stanton's mic, there you go.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Stanton Porter. And I'm the applicant on these four matters before you tonight. My address is 98 North Broad Street over in Winder, and that's 30680. I like the way that it was presented because I'm gonna talk about all four at the same time versus having to repeat myself four different times. The project that we're proposing to do here with these four matters in front of you, it's two adjoining tracts of land. It's at the corner of Hodges Street and Covington Street. It's, the two pieces of property together are just under seven acres total. This area of Loganville is a residential area. It's already zoned, like we said in that initial part, R44. So it's, this is a residential area. And what we overall are looking to do and asking is a rezone to R22, the open space subdivision or the overlay. This kind of rezone, an R22 open space subdivision, it has a lot area of 16,000, has to be minimum 16,000 square feet. All 10 of the lots that we're looking to do meet that requirement. So there's no issue with that. It does require 100-foot lot width in the Section 119 of the zoning for Loganville. But it does specifically lay out in, in the R22 code section that the lot width and yards may be reduced upon special use approval by the city council. So when the city put together these regulations, there was certainly a contemplation that, you know, each project that came forward, you may need to alter some of these, either the minimum lot area or the lot width, with the front yard, that, that basically based on the particular project, some of these numbers may need to be changed because it specifically states in there that this may be done by city council approval. And, and the reason that you have to do that is that this, an R22 overlay district is that it's gonna have a large open space. And so we want that, in, in order to get that open we need to put the lots all together. And then that's to have a nice open space for that subdivision, you know, basically a pocket park for these 10 homes. Also in R2, and these are nice houses, some of the requirements in the sort of relatively recent update to Chapter 119 of Loganville's Code or ordinances require 75% of the house to be brick or stone on the outside. It has to have certainly an upgrade or nice landscaping. Like I said, there's gonna be open space in the subdivision. I also will point out that R22 actually allows a maximum density of 2.6, 2.06 units an acre. And, and we actually, the 10 lots that we're trying to put in there are asking for this rezone and variance in order to put 10 lots in there is only a density of 1.4, 1.42 units an acre. And so we're not, the, the reason that we need the rezone is to try to put these lots in along those streets versus the back area of, of the property, which would not be real conducive to building under the current R44 zoning. And so it's not, we're not overdoing the density, in fact, not even doing it up to what the maximum that would be allowed under an R22 overlay district. So pretty significant decrease in what would be allowed. I think that with the open space, that there is, the, the reduction in the, on the variance, the lot width from 100 to 75 would still allow us to meet all the requirements in the R22 overlay district. That those nice houses meet those minimum square footage, the, the, the landscaping requirements. And like I said, have that nice access to the pocket park. I understand too, that although this isn't something that the city of Loganville would require of the development in, in sort of talking with different people in the community and hearing a little bit of feedback, that one of the concerns is that this development here is just another set, you know, quote, "just another set of rental homes." And I would like to sort of offer and volunteer and also point out that the R22 overlay district requires, it's a mandatory requirement of an HOA be set up. And, and the function of this HOA is the maintenance of that pocket park, that open space. We, the 10 homeowners there, it's gonna be a small HOA, but they'll be responsible for the maintenance and maintaining. And, and collectively, they will own, once the subdivisions developed, they would own that land. There's no intention on the part of the developer to, to put in rental homes here. And so, you know, although like I said, I don't think that in talking with the city department, that it's, it's something they're particularly concerned about. We, we would not oppose or would certainly offer as a condition to make one of the restrictive covenants when we, when we put together those covenants that the house, that, that these 10 houses have to be owner occupied. We think that the, the houses that are gonna be built, based on what the overlay district, the sort of requirements there, that these are gonna be nice homes. They're gonna be homes that are gonna be owner occupied. These are not small, sort of cheap rental homes that are gonna be built. And so they're not gonna be rental homes. Well, in, in fact, R22 requires before the final plat approval, the covenants have to be submitted, the proposed covenants have to be submitted to the city. And we would put that in those covenants that the property, that these 10 lots have to be owner occupied. In addition to, the HOA, of course, has to maintain that pocket park. So I think that, that this is a great economic use of this property. Like I said, this is a, this is a residential area. It'd be beneficial to the city. It makes sense to change from the current zoning of R44 to the R22 open space subdivision overlay. Just because the way that the roads are, not having to build, you know, additional, not, not doing flag lots or not doing, you know, build additional driveways or driveway easements to try to reach that back part. Instead, take that back part of the property and make it sort of a nice usable space for, for all 10 of the homes that are there. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that any of the members of the commission have. And otherwise, I'd just ask that, that you recommend that the city council approve both of the rezone, which is just two tracts of land. That's why there's two rezones, and then both of the variance request.
Does the planning commission have any questions for the applicant?
I think that we need to, we need to say that this meeting that we're having tonight is only for zoning and resizing. And we cannot make any decisions about whether a house is rented or sold once it is built. That's not up to us, that's up to the people that own this. And that, I don't think we can really discuss that and how much they charge for our house. I don't, anybody else have something to say? If you really read this week in our, in our book, Section 11934. Oh. Has anybody else got something to say about this?
Janice, this is Alma.
Yeah, I would, I would like to know, what is the front footage on those three new homes that have just been built across the street?
It's just a hair over 97 feet.
Yeah, those, this is Rich. Yeah, I went out and looked at those houses across the street and talked to someone there. Those, those houses are all 93 feet wide. And they get 80-some feet, I believe, in the back.
They asked for a variance a few months back, a seven-foot variance to cover all three lots. So, yes.
Have all of you had time to go out and look and see what's out there? I hope you have, because we, yeah, I know several people did some walking out there, and Caroline did what we could. We can't do a lot of walking right now. But I, I want everybody, when we have property like this, I want everybody to go out and look at it and see how you feel about it. This is our town, and we need to really take care of it.
I went out and looked. I didn't get out and walk, but I did ride and sit out front and look and look at the three new homes that were built across the street.
Is that Alma?
That's me.
Okay, I didn't, I, I, I don't like it when I can't see you. I can see Brian and Angela and Tim and me. I can't see the rest of, but anyway. Alma, I got you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any comments?
Hi, this is Kathy. I have, I do have a question. Why, why would it need to be a variance as far as the size of the property? I understand having the, the, the space, a green space for them. But why couldn't there just be eight houses there rather than 10? And still keep it at the same size?
I think that's a great question, and I'm glad that you brought that up. I think that it really comes down to the economics. And so what, what we're trying to do is, you know, it's quite expensive to do long driveways. You know, we don't wanna do flag lots. By that, I mean a little strip of land for a driveway to get to the back. And not having, you know, not trying to, to build new roads. And so in order to make the property economically developable, like, you know, in order to put homes there, you know, felt that 10 lots is sort of what, what needed to be, needed to be there. And, and in order to achieve that 10 lots, to keep that large, to keep that open space in the back, we need to be able to do 10 lots. And so the only way to do it, as, you know, in talking with our engineer and drawing up their proposed site plan, the only way to, to get that in and still meet all the other requirements, the minimum lot area, to make sure that we can get houses on there that are gonna be the appropriate size. And also with the topography of the land, we needed our reduction from 100 to 75 feet.
What, what is it gonna be, the cost of these houses?
We don't have anything to do with that.
Well, can we not ask that question, though?
Well, you can ask that question, but that, that is not for us to decide that.
I don't, honestly, I'm not sure exactly what the list price is gonna be. You know, there's a, there's a lot of things that go into that, particularly what the market is at the time that they'd be completed. I mean, no houses are, you know, obviously, we haven't even started any kind of construction. We're just in the beginning phase of the process. I can say, though, that, that with the requirements of the R22 overlay district, I mean, it's, I, I think that those are, those are gonna be nice homes. It requires, like I said, 75% of the outside of the house either has to be brick or stone. And so, you know, these aren't, and then the rest of it has to be, you know, a masonry siding, a hardy plank type material. These are not gonna be cheap vinyl rental homes. But in terms of the exact dollar figure, I'm not sure. So we don't know what it would be.
And you said, what is the, the square footage of the houses?
So the minimum square footage in R22 overlay is 2,000 square feet. So they'll all be at least 2,000 square feet with two-car garages are also required in the R22 overlay. So it also requires sod and all, like, has to be sod and all grassed areas. You gotta plant at least one large tree. And it, these are, in sort of looking at other areas, developed, other zoning areas, this, this kind of overlay district that we're asking it to be resoned to had some extra things that the developer has to do or the builder has to do for these houses to make them what I think will be more attractive, nicer homes.
This is Rich. And one of my big things is to make sure that they wouldn't be rentals.
And, and I understand that. And like I, and I said, and I think Ms. Triple even mentioned this too. I understand that the, the city maybe positioned and sort of asking the planning department that, that's a, they said that's not something they get into. And, and we also, as, as the applicant and sort of representing the, the property owner and developer, you know, we wanna have an ear to what the citizens of, of the city of Loganville want and, and are concerned. And so, like I said, even though the city has told me that, you know what, that's not something we're gonna get into. We wanna volunteer that we'll put it in the covenants that they're gonna, that, that the owner, I mean, this'll be, this'll be a covenant that runs with the land. And so we're not talking, you know, just the initial purchaser, but people in the future, there'll be an HOA. And, and one of the requirements is that it has to be owner occupied. So again, that's, I understand that's not a, and, and something that's gonna be imposed by the city. And the city is not gonna get into enforcing that, just like they don't get into enforcing, you know, whether somebody, whether a person in a neighborhood cut their grass or has their mailbox painted. It'd be something that the, the member, these 10 homes that are part of the HOA would enforce. But, but we're not looking to build 10 rental homes here.
Thank you.
This is Alma, and maybe I missed this, but how deep, how deep are the lots?
Average of 214 feet deep, I believe.
That's right.
So.
I had to move computers because mine froze up. So I'm at somebody else's computer right this second, and most of my paperwork's at my desk. They getting it fixed right now, so.
So what, would there be a difference in the depth of the lots if, if the zoning stayed at 100-foot frontage?
I'm not sure, so I guess going back to my reason why we are asking for the variance from the 100 to 75, I'm not sure whether the project is economically feasible if the, if the variance wasn't granted from 100 to 75. And so, you know, it, in other words, you know, there's a certain overhead expense, there's a certain amount, but the seller feels like, you know, they've got to get. And without being able to put 10 lots on it, you know, it felt like that was sort of the minimum that we could do that would make this project work. And so I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure what it would look like if it was less than the 10 lots, because I'm not sure that, that it would even be done.
Ms. Janice?
Yes?
I have a question.
Okay.
Mr. Porter, what is your vision for the pocket park? And I understand you're saying it's got to be maintained by the HOA. Does, um, does that mean that it would only be available to the people in that neighborhood?
So.
Ask that again, hon, please.
I'm sorry, can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah, but I.
Yeah.
Um, what I asked was, what was the vision for the pocket park, if there was any at this point at all? And would, while I understand it has to be maintained by the HOA, would it be open to the public?
The property would be owned by the HOA. So I think that they could restrict who is able to access it because it'd be, it'd be owned by 10 owners. And so I guess that answers your question. It would not be a, there's no plan or part of the application to make it a public park of the, actually, the R22 overlay requires that the HOA be the owner of, of the open space. And so it'd be up to the HOA on, on sort of how they, they regulate and what they do with it. In terms of what vision, I don't, I don't think that, you know, it'd just be more of an open space that there, you are allowed to, you know, I, I think they'd have to sort of see after the, get in there to develop it, whether putting any kind of walking trail or anything. There is some, some sort of requirement about, you know, can't go in and clear cut or just completely bulldoze the whole open space. A, a certain amount of it, I believe, has to be, um, let's see, yeah, at least 90% of the minimum required open space has to remain natural and undisturbed. And so, and, and that's, that's from the requirement from the, the code from 119. And so, you know, a large portion of it, you know, if you, I think at most, maybe a walking trail or something small like that that the HOA could do.
The one thing that we really have to take into consideration is, and the city has no control at all over an HOA. They, I mean, if they do something that, in that neighborhood that we're not, Barbara, you could probably say more about this than me because y'all have an HOA where you live, right?
Right, and we don't have any problems.
But as, but you have people that, you have people that supervise them and tell them what to do, right?
No, we have a president, we have a board.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, and there's, there's gonna be squabbling, but we haven't interfered with anything in the city, and the city doesn't interfere with anything we do either.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. The city has no control over an HOA. And I think we need, I think everybody needs to know this. And we have, we have no control over whether a, a house is sold or rented. It can be rented or sold in your subdivision, right?
Yes. In fact, we had somebody just buy a house out there and is trying to rent it. He must want a fortune because it's still sitting empty. And our house is sale ASAP.
Okay, we just, I just wanted to, I want everybody to really understand that, that we don't have.
They're a benefit. Janice, they really are a benefit to the area because we don't allow people changing oil, wrecked cars and junk and stuff like that. Our subdivision's going on 16 years old, and it looks as good as the day we moved in, except the trees are bigger and we have some gorgeous flowers and shrubs.
It is.
So it's very beneficial to have an HOA.
Yes, everybody should have one. I wish you had more of them in Loganville.
I agree.
Mr. Tim. Yes.
I, I think, did you say these lots were, how, how deep did you say you thought they were?
214.
Yeah, okay, very good. That's what they are, for the most part. Thank you.
Is there any more questions for the applicant? There's no more questions. Janice, you wanna open up the floor for questions from the audience?
Okay, we'll open up the floor now for, uh, in the audience. Please, please, everybody, let's be, oh, let's be nice to the person that's in front of you. We do, we only give two to three minutes, which is plenty of time to say what you need to say or ask what you need to ask. So we'll open up the floor now for questions. And is Robbie doing this tonight, Tim?
Kyle is.
Kyle, Kyle? Okay, we're ready, Kyle.
Anybody that I unmute here in a second, it should prompt you. Just make sure that you state your name, please, so we know who's speaking, because not everybody can see the participant list. So they don't know who I've unmuted. Just make sure that you state your name, please, so we know who's speaking because not everybody can see the participant list, so they don't know who I've unmuted.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay, hey, this is Melanie Long. I live on Covington Street. Um, I've had several people ask me just in the last few minutes, sent me messages. Can y'all put up, I have a picture here of the plat with the proposed drawing for what the subdivision's going to look like. The people out there would like to see that. And I would like to specify, Stanton Porter, are you the actual developer or are you simply an attorney representing the developer?
Kyle, could you unmute Stanton?
Okay, I'm, I'm an attorney that, that I was hired to, um, represent the property owner and the developer in the application.
Okay, so as far as technical questions about the property, then you can't answer that because you are not, in fact, the developer that will be building these houses, correct?
I'm certainly happy to answer, you know, I, I'm not exactly sure what the question is in terms of, if you have a question, I'm happy to answer it. If it's something I don't know, you know, in terms of.
Okay. I was just making sure that people know that you, yourself are not the one that's going to be developing this property. So we're not actually speaking to the developer, we're speaking to the developer's attorney. I just want to make that point to the people listening. My other question is, I looked up the R forty-four and the R twenty-two codes on Muni code. Now, maybe Muni code has not been updated, but I'm showing that an R forty-four, which the properties currently are listed, uh, means that they have to have a one acre lot and a minimum of an eighteen hundred square foot house. An R twenty-two means a half acre lot with a sixteen foot, uh, square foot minimum home. So I don't know if Muni code hasn't been updated or not, so that was the information I had. Because you said the houses, if they gave you the R twenty-two zoning, that you would be building two thousand plus square foot homes. So I just wanted to ask about that. I wanted to ask if we could just leave it at R forty-four. There's plenty of room for six houses in there. And then again, if they do give you the R twenty-two zoning, uh, that, that would give you your ten houses there somehow, however you would design it. I don't want to see you go from a hundred square foot road frontage down to seventy-five. The three properties across the street have ninety-three square feet. You're asking to reduce it by almost twenty feet a lot, and if anybody rode by there, you'll see how jammed up those houses are to each other. So I would ask that if they do give you the zoning, I would like to see them not give you the variance. And I would also want to know why, if R twenty-two zoning requires three sides brick, why the three houses you just built are vinyl?
I can answer that. The, in the application, they're asking for the R twenty-two with the overlay.
Okay.
The overlay, uh, requires sixteen thousand square foot lots.
Okay.
The hundred foot road frontage and seventy-five percent four sided brick or stone. The housing.
Okay, go ahead.
Were built across the street are R sixteen zoning, and they have hardy plank and not vinyl side.
Okay. What are the requirements for the R forty-four with the overlay? And is there's a difference between R forty-four zoning and R forty-four with overlay? Is there a difference in those?
We don't have an overlay for the R forty-four.
Okay, so then the, 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 what I saw on Muni code, the forty-four thousand square foot lot and a minimum of eighteen hundred square foot heated home? That's what applies for that?
For the R forty-four, yes.
Okay, but on the R twenty-two, there's something called the overlay. So then that's a sixteen thousand square foot lot, um, with seventy-five percent brick.
Correct.
Okay, um, now, is there any difference in what they have to do if they give them the variance and the lot is smaller? Does that change the size of the house any, or will it still be that gigantic house on this tiny lot?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't change the square footage required for the house, and it doesn't change the lot's size. They have to maintain that sixteen thousand square foot lot size. They're just asking for a reduction in the width of the lot, the road frontage, but they still have to maintain that sixteen thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you. And like I said, as a resident of Covington Street, um, it would be my wish that we would leave the zoning exactly as it is now and that we would deny the variance. There's plenty of property there for six to seven nice houses, and I feel like that's more than plenty. We're trying to squeeze every drop of blood out of our citizens here, and we're just getting too many, you know, he can sit there all day long and say it's not his intention, and as Danny Roberts and everybody else keeps saying, we have no control over whether these will become rentals or not. The fact that this same developer said that he wouldn't turn them rental, the ones across the street, uh, if I'm not mistaken, they're taking the government vouchers for housing, fancy word for section eight housing. So we've got section eight across the street. I just say I have to always look to see somebody's past behavior to see how they're going to behave moving forward. And, um, that's all I had to say today, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, this is Joanne, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, I'm pretty much going to piggyback on everything that Melanie said. Melanie did a great job. I'm going to try to be quick because I have a lot to say. First, the planning and zoning, just like Melanie said, we have played this game before. We have come here repeatedly, we have these developers coming in telling us, oh, it's going to be this and this and this, whether it's a lot that was supposed to be for somebody's dream house and now they're rental homes, or a tree that they swore they were going to preserve, we go over this and over this, and it's the same results every time. If everybody remembers, at the time of the Haddout report, they told us Loganville is untapped land. Everybody's coming here and everybody's trying to get their money out of us, and it's up to us, you guys, council. We have to be the firewall before this place is turned into a concrete jungle, houses squeezed together, and everything else succumbs with it. Last thing to planning and zoning, with all due respect, I hear Ms. Tribble asking you guys every time, have you been out to the property? And too few of you have been to the property. If you're going to be on this board and you're going to represent this city, you need to go out and you need to look at the property. And to Mr. Stanton, this is not our first rodeo. With all due respect, your covenants, your HOAs, we all know, you could sit here and say whatever you want and, you know, make it all la di da. It's going to be rainbows and sunshine, and at the end of the day, just as Melanie said, the last time your guy came through here, we heard all the same stuff and he turned it into rental homes. You sit here and you say, oh, you can't have eight houses because the only way economically is for ten houses. This is our city, work with us. You want to come here, you want something from us? Take it how it is, stop being greedy, and that's about all I have to say.
Joanne.
Thank you.
I have to say something.
Okay.
I resent the fact of being told that most of us did not look at the property. How would she know? I look at every piece of property that crosses my path.
I like to say, I like to re-say the same thing. This is Rich, and there has never been a property that I have not looked at and walked it. And, and that, I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't think that was right.
I don't either, I resent it very much, and this is Barbara.
Thank you, this is. Go ahead.
Um, hi, it's Catherine, I just wanted to butt in. I've been listening on my way home from Atlanta from work. Um, I just wanted to say a little piece, I appreciate the planning and zoning, uh, people in the committee, and I'm really tired of hearing fellow citizens think that they have any kind of control over people's property. I'd really like to see whatever happens, happens, and see people be a little bit less elitist, classist, racist, whatever you want to call it. Stop using coded language like section eight. Just wanted to throw that out there, I do appreciate everything you guys are doing. Um, I'm tired of people trying to participate in unconstitutional and frankly, immoral behavior. So just wanted to throw that out there. Uh, thank you guys for everything you do, uh, to the developer. I hope whatever variances are granted to you, and everybody have a good night. But the people that are elitist and think that they have any control over any other property than their own should probably mind their own yards. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, how's everyone doing this evening? So, um, I've listened to everyone and I appreciate the floor, and I think.
Ms. Candace?
Yes.
Please make sure to state your name so that we know who we're speaking to.
My name is Candace, hello, everyone, how is everyone doing this evening? So I was listening to everyone, good, and Stanton, um, you know, I'm sure you feel like you walked into a fire pit, but I will say I think it's a lot of emotions involved, and it, this has been a long road. I know I've been kind of on the sidelines for a little while now, but what I do know, I've taken upon myself to do, educate myself and research and to call other city councils and similar, similar cities such as Loganville to see how they kind of do their whole planning and zoning. And what I'm really perplexed, and maybe this is another meeting, maybe the next meeting, we can kind of circle back. What I'm perplexed about is how many times I hear what the city council cannot do. I'm really not understanding that because when I call other city councils, they have a clear understanding of what development is taking place, and whether it's a fee simple, whether it's a rental or lease, whether apartments can come or not. I just, I'm really don't understand that, and that's where I really want to dig a little deeper in, and this may not be the proper setting, but maybe that can be an agenda item for the next meeting, what the city council actually can do. I, I really need to understand that, and I have a lot more to say, but I'll save it for the next one. I've done my homework and research, and I will have to bring that to the table.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hey Candace, this is Danny, the city manager. You can give me a call tomorrow or anytime, I would love to tell you what we can and can't do. But basically, set and price point, dictating ownership, those are federal constitutions. I know Melanie just said Danny Roberts likes to say this all the time. Yes, it's, it's a law that I have to abide by as a city manager for the city of Loganville. So those are things we can and can't do, um, you know, we don't, we're not supposed to talk about price for property. When I am supposed to bring it up during a rezoning, um, there's only a few times that you can deny a, a zoning. So what people need to understand is the price point and talk about developer being greedy, he's got a point, a price that he's trying to buy the property from the landlord, really it comes down to the property owner's rights. It's their property, it doesn't belong to the city of Loganville, it doesn't belong to most of the people in this group listening, it belongs to the property owner. So he wants the, or she wants the best use of her property, and that they have a constitution right to ask for the best use of their property, which will yield them the best money. So, you know, when it comes down to that, there are certain things we can't deny zoning for. Some items like if you're trying to put a commercial in a residential neighborhood on our zoning map. If it doesn't fit the land use map, then those are grounds for dismissal if the council chooses to. But saying that it's going to create traffic, those grounds constitutionally, that the state of Georgia constitution, the federal co, or the US constitution says we can't deny them because inherently, if you add one house or one building, you're inherently adding more traffic. Traffics are reasons that we cannot deny, we cannot take into account schools because the school system doesn't, you know, there's our own government, they have to, you know, future their, future land use, you know, how many kids they're going to have in the future. So those are things that we are bound by, by the state constitution of Georgia. So if you want to give me a call tomorrow, I'd love to talk to you. You can come up here, have a meeting with me face to face, and we can get it, so you can know what we can and can't do. But, um, you know, all cities follow the same thing as far as the state of Georgia constitution, so hope that helps.
Hey guys, it's Joanne Byrne again. Barbara, Rich, I apologize if I misspoke, I don't know exactly what I said, but I know that you guys go out to every property. So I apologize, uh, that was not at all directed to the two of you, so I just wanted to say that.
Accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kyle, do we have anybody else?
Yes, it takes me a second to get them to unmute, but I believe Paul Smith, I just unmuted him, he's starting to speak.
All right, hi, thank you, yes, Paul Smith. I've been here listening, and yes, we have a lot of emotions, excuse me, floating around, but the young lady in the vehicle that made a broad reference that we were all elitist and bordering on racist, I think we need an apology from her. There's a difference when we are talking about the quality of our community and how it does affect, uh, the property that we own in Loganville. And so it's not purely demographics that is the issue, there's a lot of things, and it's proven, and we know it, that basically anytime there's rental houses in a place where there's property owned, uh, by owners, the value decreases. That is a proven fact most of the time. So for this lady who was in her car making these accusations, I take offense at it. I am not a elitist, I live in a fifty-five and over community, and I just want what's best for my city. So, uh, I would like to share that with the majority of the citizens who may be against this proposal, thank you.
And I would, I would just like to interrupt a second and say that we need to stick on topic of these four applications.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Thank you. You know, I, you know, if you remember at the very beginning of this discussion, I said, we're here to discuss this variance, the size of the lots, and we're not here to discuss how much these houses are going to cost, we don't have anything to do with that. We don't have anything to do with the HMOs, they are responsible if they take that responsibility. Our, our, our people can't just go out and tell them they got to do this, they got to do that, because that is not their job. This subdivision will be up to the people that live in it. If, if I decided to rent my house, which I would never do, I'm going to be living here till my toes turn up, I hope. But nobody can tell me how much to charge for my house, how much to charge for rent, and the city certainly does not have that authority, and I've said that so many times. I bet in the last two years, I've said that at least a hundred times, we don't have that authority. The main thing that we're here tonight is for this variance, do you want the lot sizes to be cut down? Do you want the R forty-four, the R twenty-two? This is, this is the things that we're here to make of. Do you want to cut these, the footage from a hundred feet to seventy-five feet? This is what we're here for. This is what we're doing tonight, and this is what we should be discussing tonight. I know that a lot of people, you know, I, I can't imagine anybody saying this town doesn't love everybody because we do. I've lived here a long, long time, longer than any of you or anybody sitting on that council. But I think that we have a loving little town and a lot of things I don't like now. Like, we're too crowded, the traffic's terrible, but we can't help that, DOT has to do that. So let's get back to the subject, and if you have any questions, Kyle, I'm going to be quiet now.
Thank you, Candace.
I have unmuted Ms. Candace, she'd like to speak real briefly to Danny to reply to.
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Janice, I, I respect that we need to stay on topic, I'm just going to respond to Danny. Danny, I'm actually a program manager by day, I have very, um, tight schedule, so I'm not available tomorrow. I would love to talk about this actually with others in a, um, meeting, if we can put it on the agenda. I think it's better, awareness is key for everyone, transparency. I think it's better awareness is key for everyone, transparency, so that we can have trust. So I don't really want a side conversation with you. Can we really put it on the agenda for next meeting, please? Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, I'll, I'll talk with the council. But you can shoot me an email too. My email's on the city's website. Thank you.
Do we have, we have any more? Do we have any more?
Kyle, you have two more people, Melanie and Catherine.
Yes, I just unmuted Catherine. And Melanie's right underneath.
Not to veer from the topic, but I would like to say I would never apologize. And also living in a 55 and up community is also kind of discriminatory, but whatever. I digress. Yield my time. You guys have a good night.
Once again, we need to stick to topic of these four cases. Cause I hadn't ate supper yet.
Me either, Tim. But please think, think about what you're doing. And let's, 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 I think we need to get back to this too. And remember, we don't have the final say on this. And this, I want to tell you something. This planning committee that we've got, and I feel like I have to say this, is one of the best ones I've ever served with. And I just, I just want to say thank you to all of them. And I, you know, we don't make a tremendous salary for doing what we do. We do it because we love the town we live in. So anyway, I've said my say now. So, Tim, I guess we were-
No, I had, I was, he unmuted me, but I was just gonna have him unmute me because I wanted him to show this plaque which he just put up. So that's all I needed to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any more comments, Kyle?
No, that was the last comment. And the plat, for the record, I'm controlling the display. And the plat came from Tim. It took time to get Tim to send it to me. So that's why I just now put it up. But no, there are no more comments.
Yeah, we have plaques in our packet.
Packets.
Yep. If you could just leave that up for the viewers to see. And Ms. Janice, if you want to call, roll on these four cases, we need to do one at a time.
Call your name. I'll call your name and you either say yay or nay.
We have to have a motion.
For all of them at one time, right?
No, we are not. We vote separately. And we need a motion and a second before you call roll.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Hold on.
Okay, this is, we're voting right now on case number R20014. Everybody remember what that is?
Yes.
Do we need to go over, do I need to read them again, Tim?
No, we just need a motion and a second.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this or deny.
Everybody started fighting. It was hilarious.
Do I have a motion to accept or deny?
I make a motion, we accept. Barbara.
Okay, this is a motion for the present zoning R44. And Barbara made the motion to accept. Okay, do I have a second?
I second Kathy Self.
Kathy. Okay, I have a motion and a second from Barbara made the motion and Kathy seconded. This is R20-014. Okay, as we go down, we need a yay or a nay. Richard Homick?
Nay.
Amanda Sosby?
Nay.
Barbara Forrester?
Yay.
Alma Thomas?
Nay.
Catherine Self?
I didn't hear that one.
Yay.
Yay.
Yay, did you say? I'm sorry.
Yes, I got it.
Okay, I'm, I got it too. Okay. Brian Linkus?
Yay.
Okay, so we, let's see, one, two.
Ms. Janice, you get to vote.
Oh boy, I get to vote one time, don't I? Now, this is for the, the lot size, right? Am I doing this right now?
No, this is for, this is for the rezone from R44 to R22 overlay.
Okay, that doesn't make the, that doesn't make the lot smaller.
Correct.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do the yay on that one. I'll break the tie.
Tim, can you read for the people so that everybody knows what, what just passed?
Stanton Porter has requested a rezone of the property located at parcel LG110008, Hodges Street, Loganville, Georgia, 30052. Walton County presents, I'm sorry, present zoning is R44. Single family rural residential. Requested zoning is R22, CSO. See overlay right there. So I hadn't got to that yet. Single family suburban residential, open space subdivision overlay. Proposed development for small 10 lot subdivision on 3.0 acres. And I have Richard Homick, nay. Amanda, nay. Barbara Forrester, yay. Alma, nay. Catherine, yay. Brian, yay. And I will vote yay.
So that passed 4 to 3.
Yes.
Next case.
Okay, you want me to read it or you want to read it?
I can read it. Read it, let me find it.
Case V20. Case V20015. Stanton Porter has requested a variance of property located at parcel LG110008, Hodges Street, Loganville, Georgia. Walton, 30052, Walton County. Request is to decrease the width of the lot frontage from 100 feet to 75 feet. Section 119 to 49 to. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to deny that request.
Who was that?
Catherine.
I didn't hear what the motion was.
Deny.
Okay.
Okay, Catherine, you, you're making a motion to deny. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it, Rich.
Okay, Rich. Okay, now we're going to take a vote. I'll call your name. Richard Homick?
Nay.
Amanda Sosby?
Nay.
Barbara Forrester?
Nay.
Alma Thomas?
Nay.
Catherine Self?
Nay.
Nay. Brian?
Nay.
I'm sorry.
Nay.
I didn't hear you. Okay, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Okay, I'll vote on that one too. I'd vote nay on that.
No, you'll get voted on that one.
Well, I only, I, I don't mind the, the variance, but I, yeah, okay. Anyway, are we ready for case number R20016?
Hold on. Hold on one second.
Okay, hon.
So on the last case that was just voted?
It was approved 100%.
So Catherine, Catherine made a motion to deny the variance.
That's right.
And everybody voted no to not deny it.
Oh Catherine, I did that backwards. Catherine, you meant you wanted to deny, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it should be yays. Let's say it again.
She needs to make, she needs to make another motion. We need to go through the process again.
All right, Catherine, I'm sorry hon. Will you forgive me?
I do. I went along with it. I make a motion, a motion to deny the request for the variance.
Okay.
We need a second.
A second?
Rich, I second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so if you-
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So this is a motion, this is a motion to deny the variance. So you're either voting yes to deny or no not to deny it. Does everybody understand that?
Okay.
Okay.
Richard?
Yes.
Yes, if you want to deny it, no if you don't, okay?
Yes.
Richard? Amanda?
Yes.
Barbara Forrester?
No.
Alma Thomas?
Yes.
Catherine Self?
Yes.
Brian Linkus?
Yes.
Okay, so it's five to one, Tim?
Correct.
To deny.
To deny.
Uh huh.
All right, next.
Okay. I'm very sorry that I screwed that up. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Case number R2016. Stanton Porter has requested a rezone of the property located at parcel LG110008, A0, Covington Street, Loganville, Georgia, 30052, Walton County. Present zoning is R44, single family rural residential. Requested zoning is R22, CSO, single family suburban residential. Open space subdivision overlay. Proposed development for small 10 lot subdivision on 3.84 acres. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve R22.
What?
Could you say that again?
I'm sorry, my microphone's down. I make a motion to approve the rezone to R22.
I second it.
Okay, was that Brian that made the motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Brian. And Barbara? Seconded? Okay.
I got a question, Rich.
Go ahead, Richard.
On this, this has nothing to do with the, for the 10 lot, 10 lot part of it, right?
This is the rezone for the property from R44 to R22 overlay.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, now Brian made a motion to accept, right?
To approve, yes.
Okay, and Barbara seconded the, seconded it. Okay. Are you ready to take a vote? Let's get this right before we go down, okay? If you want to, Brian, approve this. So if you agree, you say yes. If you do not approve, you say nay. Good deal? Okay, Richard Homick?
Yes.
Amanda Sosby?
No.
Barbara Forrester?
Yes.
Alma Thomas?
No.
Catherine Self?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have four and two, Tim?
Yes.
One to approve and two, no.
Correct.
Okay. All right, we're ready for the last one now. Okay, here we go. Oh. Got another one of these sheets. I ran about 10 off. Just a minute, Tim. Okay, now I'm ready. Case number V20017. Stanton Porter has requested a variance of the property located at parcel LG110008, A0, Covington Street, Loganville, Georgia, 30052, Walton County. Request is to decrease the width of lot footage from 100 feet to 25 feet. Section 119 to 49 to.
75 feet, Janice.
What did I say?
25.
Well, they've taken 25 away. Okay, 100 feet is 75 feet. See, I'm good at math, Barbara. Okay, all right. Do I have a motion that we accept this or deny?
I make a motion that we deny, Rich.
Okay.
I have a question, Tim.
Yes, ma'am.
We've given him the right to do the R22 overlay, yet this panel's taken away the frontage. I don't understand. You give it one hand and take it away with the other. He isn't going to get 10 houses if you don't cut lot, the lot frontage. Doesn't make any sense to me. I'm sorry, people.
Well, he doesn't have to build 10 houses.
No, but it won't be profitable for them to load it all in and work on them and everything else if they don't. He made that very clear.
Okay, guys, we have a- I'm sorry, I need a second.
Throw that out because we, you gave with one hand and take it away with the other.
Okay, Rich, deny this. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Amanda?
Okay, Amanda. Second, okay. If you want to deny this, you say yes. If you want to do it okay, then you say nay. Rich's motion was to deny. And if you agree with him, you say yes. Rich?
Yes.
Yeah. Amanda Sosby?
Yes.
Barbara Forrester?
No.
Alma Thomas?
Yes.
Catherine Self?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Tim, we have one, two, three, five.
Five to one.
Five to deny and one to not deny, okay?
Correct.
You got it. Okay. And I made a copy of all this for you, Tim, if you need it tomorrow.
I got it.
Okay, hon. Now. Oh. I think that we've done everything that we have on the agenda for tonight. And please remember that the city council makes the final vote on all of this. We do not get the opportunity to do that. The city council does. If you have any comments that you'd like to make to them, please tell them to go and look at the property and see what they think. And if they think this is what Loganville needs. And I want to tell everybody on my planning commission this. I talked to Melissa today. She's doing wonderful after her cancer surgery. And in fact, she was going to come tonight and have dinner with me and join us with the meeting, but her mother-in-law is coming down to visit her tonight. Have not talked to Bruce, but I hope he's doing well.
Bruce is okay. Bruce is okay.
And I hope that all of you, okay, wonderful. I hope that all of you have avoided the COVID because I had it and Harold had it. And we thought that we were going to, I thought that I was going to die. Harold did, Harold's 92 and he did wonderful. But anyway, we've been praying for you, Angela. But anyway, we've been praying for you, Angela. Hope you're feeling better. Oh, and we, we just, we just want everybody in our little town to be happy and we want only the best for our town. Now we just say thank you to the Lord. And do I have a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second?
I'll second. It's Amanda.
Okay, all in, all in favor, I'll go down the road. Richard?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And I sure did miss seeing all of y'all face to face and giving you a bottle of water tonight.
Same. I miss all of you guys. Barbara couldn't see me.
Have a good night.
I will if I ever catch my breath.
I'd like to say before everybody logs off that the city council meeting will be February the 11th. And it is a combined meeting.
Be as soon.
Be as soon.
Will it be soon?
Yes.
Time with what?
You need to get out now.